February twenty second, two thousand and twenty one, regular meeting of the Lake Charles Harbor and Terminal District. If everyone will please stand. Dear Lord, we ask your blessing on this board and port and the people whose livelihood depend upon it. We ask you, God, this board, in our decisions, that they are for the betterment of those we serve. We ask your blessings on all those recovering from the recent weather events for a safe and healthy recover for them recovery for them and their families. We ask this in unison. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Prudhomme will lead us in the pledge.
Please repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board encourages public comment and questions regarding all agenda items. Persons wishing to do so should complete a speaker's card, which is at the entrance of the boardroom. When speaking or asking a question on an agenda item, one should, in addition to completing the card, come to the microphone, be recognized, provide your name, address, and phone number. All comments by individuals will be limited to three minutes. The first item is approval of the January twenty five, twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one regular minutes meeting.
I make the motion that we approve the minutes.
Mr. Darbone moves.
Second.
Mr. Prudhomme, second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried. I'm gonna ask if there's any objection to move in submission, two thousand and twenty one oh nine, the Stevedoring Agreement, to the first item on the agenda, since there's several speakers. With no objection, then we'll move forward with item submission, two thousand and twenty one, authorizing the district enter into a two-year Stevedoring Agreement with Gulfstream Marine.
Mr. Chair. I make the motion that we delay this until each of us.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Darbone.
To motion to table.
Table.
To table.
To table. Our second is motion.
Okay. Mr. Dixon, second. Yes, discussion?
That's correct. If there is, if there are cards where people would like to speak, because the item's on the agenda, we have to give them the opportunity to speak before before voting on that motion.
Okay.
But so just so we're clear, the motion on the floor is to table this indefinitely. Correct. Okay.
Okay, the first speaker that I have is Brett Holliday with Gulfstream Marine.
Thank you, members of, can you, can you hear me through this?
Yes. Yeah, if you get close to the microphone, it'll help.
We'll, we'll get close then. Thank you for allowing us to speak. My name is Brett Holliday. I'm the Business Development Manager for Gulfstream Marine, and I live in Seabrook, Texas. We are honored to be selected by the Port Administration and recommended to the Board. For your approval, we hope that this can represent the start of our next chapter as a port partner here in the Port of Lake Charles, and build on our proven success to provide safe and quality service to the existing customers at the bulk terminal, as well as, as build on our, our vast knowledge and experience in handling bulk cargo across all of our brands, with our parent company, Logistec, Stevedoring, Gulfstream Marine, Pate Stevedoring, and our latest acquisition of Camloops, Stevedoring. We operate in eighty-nine terminals across North America. Our company is handling on an annual basis twenty-two million tons of bulk cargo every year, and we really and sincerely feel that we can bring this experience here to the bulk terminal, and together with the port, as we've done with the wind cargo, pursue opportunities for growth and development, as well as satisfy the needs of the, of the customers. At this time, I'll, I'll open any questions you may have, Gulfstream Marine.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Holliday. Next speaker, Dave Shaw, Gulfstream Marine.
I'll just open for questions if you need it.
No questions. Okay. Next speaker, Chris Dugah, FMT.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Chris Dugah. I'm with Federal Marine Terminals. For those who don't know, FMT has been the service provider of Bulk Terminal One for the last seven years. Throughout this time, FMT has performed well and received two nominal increases over this time. The latest increase was just a dollar in wages for the longshoreman, with FMT basically passing that cost along to the port. The port asked FMT to take this contract seven years ago, as they were unhappy with the previous provider and looking for better performance. There was no real option to renegotiate the terms, and we took that contract as is to further our commitment to Lake Charles. I say this because this was not a sweetheart contract that was handed to FMT or something that was out of line. There are basically terribly small margins on this work. We have done everything that was asked of us by the port in this contract, so we were and still are quite surprised that an RFP was suggested or really even mandated. Not only has FMD done, done what is required in the contract, we've gone above and beyond what is required. An example is that we pay key positions more than the contract specifies to ensure quality and adequate personnel provided to support these operations. It's a dirty job, and we recognize that the extra pay was warranted for select positions and to compensate accordingly. All this was done to recognize the need to take care of the workforce and ensure operations were taken care of as best as possible. Ports are supposed to be an economic engine for the region, create jobs for local community, and create good-paying jobs that money will be spent locally and reinvested in the economy and community. If the vendor that is being proposed is selected, this board will be going against everything this port should be doing for the local community. Hopefully, not too much emphasis is being put on the cheapest cost, and there's lots of consideration given to performance and the quality of, quality of the company doing the work. At BT one right now, currently, there are twenty-three thousand man-hours and roughly nine hundred thousand dollars in wages paid to local workers. If the proposed vendor selected, these wages will not all be paid to local workers, and the board's decision would be further hurting the local workforce that is already trying to rebound from the recent hurricanes. I can't imagine a scenario where this would seem the logical thing to do. Since FMT opened up in Lake Charles, we have done everything we can to try and bring cargo to the port. We attend, attend numerous trade shows per year, make joint sales calls with the ports team, we do advertising, and everything else we should do as a respectable operator. What makes our company different than the others in this process is when we occupy a location, we try to pull cargo from the entire region. We don't set up shop at other ports one, two, or three hours away and have a conflict of interest of what port is best to send cargo. FMT is a hundred percent committed to the Port of Lake Charles. We just want to be a good tenant operator. We feel that we have, we have done this over and over. Most of you probably don't know that we lease a mechanic shop from the port that still doesn't have a suitable roof since the hurricanes, yet we still pay our monthly rent that the bill, the port bills us for. Most of you probably don't know as well that we lease a building that we call our pallet shop that still doesn't have electricity since the hurricanes, yet we still pay our monthly bills to be a good tenant. As for the hurricanes, we started cleaning up all of our areas immediately when we could have tried to get the port to do it like others likely did. We went out and helped various customers, partners, clear up their own personal homes. We also, after the hurricanes, were asked by the port to locate buckets to get BT one up and running as soon as possible.
Mr. Dugah, I don't mean to interrupt you, but you're getting close to your three minutes.
Okay, I'll speed it up. So the only thing we can ask is that this process be considered local, local workers. We have eight full-time employees. Everyone here is local. We don't come from state lines, other parishes, and I'd implore each of you to do what's best for the local community, use local workers, support the, the vendor that's been here, that's done a good job, that's gone above and beyond. That's everything the ports ask, and we ask that you guys take that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lash Kretchen.
For y'all that don't know, my name is Lash Kretchen, I L A local. Look, I just want, you know, and I liked it with the comments that Chris Dugah gave about saying things went good at BT one because they was using the I L A. And we've been at, we've been at BT one probably for the last thirty to forty years since the inception it started. And we've worked on the different Stevedores, and every time it was a change or whatever, it never was the labor fault. We've always did what y'all asked us to do. Matter of fact, we've changed all our hiring times to make it convenient so when a ship come at the port at BT one, we could start it within two hours. And we, you know, we got good qualified labor here. We got a lot of guys make their insurance and feed their families from this. We've already been distraught because we lost five or six warehouses that bring bad goods to the port. And we lost all of it, but not lost it completely, but it's gonna take time to get all of that stuff fixed, or we could be up and running again. Right now, the only place we could put U S D A cargo is in shade ninety and shade nine, and that's it. You know, we got, we got a good labor force. We just don't have no work to use it on. We lost a couple of lines ago to, to Port Arthur. For whatever reason, we still don't know that today. But every time the ships come, they called for us to go load those same ships that we were loading in, in the Port of Lake Charles at the same time. I don't wanna go over my three minutes, but I just wanna let y'all know, whoever get the job, the longshoremen's wanna do the work. We've proven ourselves, and we at home, and, and, and we think we can do everything better than anybody else, excuse me on that. So if anybody got any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer. But think about it. We've been here a long time, and we've been protecting that job a long time, and we want to continue to do that. But we can't do it without y'all. Thank y'all.
Thank you. I have a question. Mr. Kretchen, give us an idea of the years that y'all have provided for the, for the Lake Charles.
We've been, whenever BT one started, we started. And I, I've been here forty, forty-nine years, and we started BT one right after I got started. Back then, when Sudders was the, the port director.
I understand. Thank you.
He had enough vision to think about the I L A.
Thank you. Wilmer Greis.
How y'all doing, everybody? My name is Wilmer Greis. My dad was a longshoreman. He retired thirty years longshoring. My grandfather was a longshoreman, did over thirty years on them docks. I've been there twenty-eight years on them same docks. Thirty years, thirty years. I'm third generation longshoreman. I love my job. Been doing it a long time. If there's me and a couple guys back here, anything involving them docks or BT, we know it. And if I don't know it, one of these guys do. My only request is that you ha, no, you keep longshoremen doing longshoreman work. We've been here, we've done this, we've proven ourselves more than once, and I just ask that you allow us to continue to prove ourselves as we've been doing. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Greis. Next, John Peters.
Good evening, everybody. I'm John Peters. I'm a business agent for I L A Local twenty-four to seven, Deep Sea Local. I just wanna say, like Chris Dugah said, twenty-three thousand man-hours at BT one. It's a lot of man-hours. For the longshoreman, man-hours mean more than money. We need that for our health care. You don't work, you don't have no health care. And as all of you know, health care is crucial during this day and times. You don't have the man-hours, you don't get the health care. We need it for our insurance, for our retirement. Longshoremen have suffered enough. We shouldn't have to fight to keep jobs. It shouldn't have to come to that. We've suffered enough. We need these man-hours. We need these jobs. You know, I just ask that you guys would consider, whatever y'all decide, longshoremen want to continue to be a part of the operation at BT one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Okay, that's all the public speakers. Any comments on the motion to table? There's no discussion. All those in favor to table, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion, motions table. Next item of business is submission, two thousand and twenty-one zero zero four, accepting the lowest response of bid of McCord Equipment for the procurement of a new telestacker for BT one and approve the amendment to the two thousand and twenty-one capital budget. Mr. Self.
Yes, Mr. President. We currently are renting a telestacker at BT one at a cost of about thirty-five thousand, five hundred dollars a month. We also have to rent a truck of about four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars a month just to move the telestacker when it needs to be moved. We anticipate that this will, it's gonna be absolutely necessary until we have the customized calcine ship loader and the customized coke ship loaders both arrive. We have a minimum of about twelve-month delivery period from the period that we issue the RFP for the calcine ship loader. We anticipate that that'll be issued in March, and we anticipate the coke ship loaders probably about two months behind that. With that being considered, we are requesting approval from the board to purchase a telestacker rather than continuing to rent it. The other benefit is the fact that the telestacker that we're gonna buy has a chute that is necessary for dust suppression. And all along, we had anticipated right after the hurricane that we would rent one for a period of time. If it accomplished what we wanted, we'd buy one with a chute. The chute cannot be added to the one that we're currently renting, so regardless, the cost to buy is about four hundred and forty-four thousand. We anticipate the cost to rent would be about five hundred and sixty-three thousand, and we, we'd already own it at that point. So we're just requesting board approval to purchase the telestacker.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Ms. McClary moves.
I second.
Mr. Lorenzi, second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried. Submission, two thousand and twenty-one zero zero five, authorizing a second extension and amendment to ground lease with Driftwood LNG LLC. Mr. Self.
Yes, Mr. President. Driftwood has requested a second extension of their short-term lease at the old Global Technip site. I'm gonna turn it over to John, again, to the legalese.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members, Driftwood currently leases on a short, short-term lease approximately four hundred and seventy acres from the Port of Lake Charles along the Ship Channel. They anticipate building a large-scale LNG export facility. They've requested to extend that short-term lease by another two years in hopes of reaching financial, final investment decision on that project. Our recommendation is we grant them that two-year extension and support the project. If you've seen, they put out a press release hoping to see some movement on these long-term LNG contracts in the very near future, that the market demand is all moving in the right direction, is their, their words to us. So we're hopeful for this project, but we recommend granting this two-year extension.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve two thousand and twenty-one dash zero zero five. Mr. Dixon moves. Mr. Easton, second. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carried. Submission, two thousand and twenty-one zero zero six, authorizing First Amendment to the ground lease with Magnolia LNG LLC and substitute guarantee agreement with Magnolia Holdings LNG LLC.
Yes, Mr. President. I'm gonna give this one to John as well. It's, as you mentioned, it's an amendment to the existing lease with Magnolia to substitute their guarantee.
Thank you, Commissioner, or Chairman and Commissioners. Magnolia is another large-scale LNG export project that has leases property from the port under a long-term lease along the industrial canal. If you guys remember, and as was put out in the press, the parent company of Magnolia LNG has gone into the Australian equivalence of bankruptcy, and the project was purchased by Magnolia LNG Holdings LLC, which is an American company, and purchased the project, so they in, in turn purchased the lease. They requested to substitute the guarantee and amend the lease to provide for a substitutionary guarantee for the project, for the long-term lease. And so we've laid it out in the submission and attached are the two agreements, one being the guarantee agreement substituting the guarantee, and the other being the amendment to the lease that contemplates the substitution. And again, this is all in support of the project that we hope moves forward very soon.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve submission, two thousand and twenty-one dash zero zero six, authorizing First Amendment to the ground lease with Magnolia LNG LLC and the substitute guarantee agreement with Magnolia Holdings LNG LLC.
Okay, motion by Mr. Darbone.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Dixon.
Mr. Chairman, if you forgive me, I do wanna point out, we do have a representative from Magnolia, Tammy Truax is here in case there are any questions.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We'll open it up for discussion.
John, where does the, what, the bankruptcy puts us in a position of essentially having no guarantee at this time, correct?
We have a guarantee, but it is with a...
Well, it's not enforceable.
It's not enforceable, no, sir. And so we, this is to the benefit of the port. We get a guarantee from a company that intends to move the project forward.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carried. Submission, two thousand and twenty-one zero zero seven, authorizing a servitude agreement with Hackberry Land LLC and a servitude agreement with Deval Enterprises.
Yes, Mr. President. The port owns property at the, really at the intersection of the Kalkash Ship Channel and industrial, the intercoastal waterway, right at the location of Deval. Deval, over the, several years ago, came to the port and requested that we enter into an agreement to, for a servitude, for them to, to push their barges up on the shoreline of the industrial canal side, which we don't really use at that point. At the same time, they purchased a piece of property, DA three, that had removal clauses, servitudes with removal clauses, and we used that DA three for disposal of Dredspole. So we had appraisals conducted on both sites. The appraisal for the port-owned piece came back at thirty-eight thousand dollars higher, thirty-four thousand dollars higher than the appraisal on the Deval site. So this is essentially exchanging servitudes, and in addition, Deval will write a check for thirty-four thousand dollars to make up the difference between the two appraisals. I miss anything?
That's great.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, approve.
Mr. Easton moves.
Second.
Second by Mr. Prudhomme. Any discussion?
I think we just want clarification. Clary has raised this question, and I did as well, that counsel satisfied that Deval is the appropriate party for us to enter this, enter into despite the subsequent sale that they've engaged in.
Yes, sir. That's correct. The two entities involved in these transactions will remain intact in perpetuity. There'll be no change there. The recently reported, I don't know if sale is the correct term for Deval, will not affect these agreements.
If I could just follow up with Mr. Lorenzi's question. And so there is no new entity being formed with the partnership of Deval and Southern Towing. Is there a new entity that, that is being formed?
Not, not that I'm aware of, no. And even if there were, it wouldn't affect our agreement with these.
I think we just wanna be satisfied that we've done our due diligence on that.
We, we have. Yes, sir.
We, we don't have representation here tonight for that, that we're aware. Okay.
I don't believe so, no, ma'am.
Thank you.
If someone from Deval is here, no.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carried. Submission, two thousand and twenty-one zero zero eight, accepting the proposal and entering into a contract with McGriff for insurance brokerage services. Mr. Self.
Yes, Mr. President. In December, we issued an RFP for insurance services, insurance brokerage services. We received, we actually got really good response. We had six respondents for those services. Four of those six are in the top ten brokers in the United States, insurance brokers. Three of those four in the top ten have offices here in Lake Charles. We had a staff, Cameron developed a committee to review the proposals. Based on that, they recommended that we enter to a three-year agreement with McGriff at a cost of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars per year for those services.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we may wanna study it. It seems like we wanna study it.
Can I make a suggestion? Can, when we selected the lobbyist firm to represent us, we had them make a presentation. My understanding about insurance at this point is pretty much sealed. I know if I pay insurance for my house, if a hurricane comes along, I know what my deductible is, and I know what I gotta pay. I don't understand the process at, at this point, so.
I think we need a motion in a second to discuss it, right, John?
To discuss it?
Yeah.
That's, that's what's on the table. Yes, there's a motion, and I believe...
I have a motion on the floor.
We never have a second.
I believe, Mr. Dudley, are you making a motion to table?
I made a, to table?
Is that, I'm sorry. Yes, what's your motion?
My motion was to study it. And so I don't know, maybe we could still make a motion to table and go from there with it.
I'll make a motion to defer.
You can, you can make a motion to defer?
Sure.
I mean, it's motion to postpone, motion to defer, motion to table.
Well, I don't know.
Take no action tonight would be the motion.
Well, I make a motion that we just, I don't know whether to defer this to a later time.
Well, that can come later. Make a motion, make a motion.
Is it stuck to later?
We can discuss it.
Yeah.
Tell me what you want to do. I'll, I'll help you with the motion.
I've got, I've got a motion that we, we would study it.
Okay.
I think you might want to hear from people, but not sure.
We will whenever we...
Would that be in the realm of study?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, you can make a motion to postpone till next regular meeting, if you'd like.
Can we do it at a special meeting?
We can. Yes, sir.
There's no use carrying, or people are out like here, hearing everybody going through, talking about, how many insurance companies are we talking about?
It's actually six brokerage firms, not really the insurance company, but it's six brokerage firms.
Okay. All right, so...
I mean, we're getting information this afternoon.
Yeah.
All right, let's, all right, this is my motion.
Sorry, Tom. What are you getting this afternoon?
I'm sorry?
What, what information are you getting this afternoon?
The scoring sheet didn't come out until about 15 minutes ago, or 15 minutes before.
The scoring machine is, is, is very good tool. There's not gonna be a question about that. But if we're gonna study this, then I'm gonna suggest that we do it at a special meeting that doesn't involve everybody that has to be here unless they want to come to the meeting. But just talk to the people from the different companies and allow them to say, these are my wares. Okay, this is what I can do, and this is what I can't do.
Okay.
So, your motion to defer it to a special meeting?
That's correct. Yes, and a special meeting can be scheduled by the board at any time.
At any time.
And, and we, the board can direct staff or specifically request presentations or whatever other information you may desire.
I'll second that.
I have a second from Ms. McClary. Open for discussion, and we have one speaker, Mr. David Perry with BXS Insurance.
Thank you. I'm David Perry with BXS Insurance. I appreciate the motion to defer. You're talking about $500 million in assets that we have out here to insure in just a few minutes to make a decision on it. So, I'm here to answer any questions, but we'd be more than happy, us and any other brokerage company that submitted a proposal to come back and make a presentation to you so that you can ask questions, because you're the people that have to vote on it. Thank you.
How much time would you, would the insurance companies need to put a presentation together? This is, you already got the paperwork done, it seems like.
Right. Correct. And that's, you know, that's sort of the difference. You know, thankfully, the staff went out for a proposal. They hadn't done that in 20 years, and we appreciate y'all doing that. It's just hard to put $500 million worth of what you can do in 15 pieces of paper. And so, probably 15, 20 minutes.
Okay. You can, you can...
We can do a, oh, I'm sorry. We'd probably need about a week.
A week. And you think the presentation would take 20, 20 minutes and 10 minutes of discussion time with the board?
Yes, sir.
So, next 20, next Monday would be, that's a week?
It's up to y'all.
Is what you have submitted, will that remain valid for...
Partially. You're, you're gonna ask questions from looking at that or from the presentation, realizing that, wow, you have this. For instance, you, we talk about harbor and marine, but you really have the majority of it. Your, your insurance has already gone through, your property. You know, that's 400 million. I mean, that's, that's a lot of the cost associated with it. It has to do with the physical assets, not necessarily tugs or barges or, you know, any marine work. And so, that's already been handled as of January 1st. So, you're really not, from what we can tell out of your policies that you currently have, under any time crunch, to make the decision today. And all we're asking is, from not only our standpoint, but any other brokerage agency that wants to come make a presentation, is to be here for you to ask us questions and say, why did you score this building this way? Why did you score it this way? Why would you insure it like this? How would you insure it? I mean, we're already underinsured a lot, and we're talking about buying the machine now instead of renting it. You know, we would ask, did you have extra expense on that former policy? You know, why are you paying for it out of hand? It may not be, I'm not sure. So, there's, you know, one question's gonna lead to another from y'all, and we would like to be here, as I'm sure every brokerage agency would, to answer those questions and do a presentation that you can really see all of our capabilities, not just our firm. And we are local here, three of us here from here, and we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for our legal counsel.
Sure.
So, if we decide to go down that path and have individual presentations and then work from that, it would still be what was presented to us in the responses to the RFPs? In other words, they can't adjust any terms that they, that they proposed in that written RFP? Or we would have to go out, I'm assuming, for a new RFP?
So, yes, you, they would be bound by their submission, right? You can't allow them to make changes. Okay.
To be clear. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
So, no additives? We're just talking about what they've presented so far?
Just, yes, yes, sir. I, I would structure it as this is an opportunity for them to present their proposal to you all and answer any questions you may have.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor to defer the motion?
Aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion statement. Submission 2021-010, concerning consideration of appropriate action of the property, property insurance deductible change, including any necessary reservation of funds.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You had asked that we add a submission item to the agenda to potentially reserve $5 million in cash to fund a potential claim associated with the deductible for the 2021 property insurance claim, property insurance potential claim. It's not necessary to amend the budget, as we discussed earlier. It would only be necessary in the event that we had an actual claim. But we'll gladly answer any questions that y'all have.
Okay, I need a, a motion to take up item 2021-010. Mr. Easton moves.
And I'll second.
Mr. Lorenzi, second. Discussion?
I think you did a good job. I think, I think everybody on the staff has put a lot of work into all of this, and they need to be commended for the job that they did too. Just don't have to worry about us questioning that.
Thank you.
I have some questions, if I might. Could you explain, in, in 2020, we had $50 million with a $25 million first loss, $25 million excess?
Sure.
With a $500,000 deductible and a $2 million premium. Now, we have a $40 million coverage with $10 million first loss, $30 million any one accident or occurrence, and $5 million deductible at $4.2 million. So, I guess what I would like, if you could walk the board through what these particular losses mean and what kind of events could trigger us digging into that $5, $5 million deductible and could it be hit multiple times?
Sure. When we were facing the 2021 insurance renewal, property insurance renewal, our broker at the time was UBS. We, obviously, you're aware of all the hurricane activity that we had and the losses that we had. Our renewal, you know, related to the hurricane, as you're also aware, the settlement went really well with the insurance company. It wasn't a settlement in terms of a lawsuit, just the claim settlement went really well. They paid us the $25 million right away, and we would anticipate the other $25 million in the next few weeks. So, that issue went really well. But when it came to the renewal, we looked at actually 18 different scenarios that were presented to us by UBS. I'm sorry, UBS?
USI.
USI, sorry. Some of them included the $5 million self-insured retention. One of them included a cat deductible minimum of $2.5 million, and one included a cat deductible minimum of $5 million. So, in each one of those different scenarios, there were six structures that we looked at. And we were doing that all in an effort to reduce the premium. Obviously, with all the hurricane activity, everybody's insurance premiums were going up. So, we, the, the policy that we had in place for 2020 wasn't even an option. You know, we had a really good, in fact, the port's insurance policy that we had in 2020 and prior was better than any of us actually have on our homes today. It's actually, the, the claim was based on a percentage of the actual cost of the loss as opposed to, you know, as an example, in Hurricane Rita, it was a percentage of what that asset was insured for. With the policy that we had in place in 2020 and prior, it was based on the claim for any one asset. So, we had a really good deductible scheme. We also had a cap of $500,000. So, we benefited from that for years. Obviously, with Hurricane Laura and Hurricane Delta hitting, they changed what they were gonna offer on that renewal. And so, we kept going back to the underwriters and came up with, were presented with 18 different structures. We went with one that had a $40 million total limit, and I guess you could say 45 million if you include the $5 million self-insured retention. At a, I, I don't know if, and what level of detail you'd like me to go, continue going into.
The, I guess, the question is, that I'm wanting clarification. It says $10 million first loss basis, any one accident. Then, $30 million on first loss basis, any one accident occurrence. What's the difference in the 10 and the 30 to get to the 40?
Cameron, I'll turn it over.
If we have multiple events, maybe a tornado causes $3 million of damage. Two months later, get a hurricane that causes $3 million of damage. Are we capped at the $5 million deductible, or will we pay $3 million each time?
We would pay $3 million each time.
That's correct.
It is, it's the same way as your normal deductible, $5 million self-insured retention would be applied both times.
So, we could have multiple occurrences that eat into that $5 million. So, that $5 million could really be more than $5 million.
Right. I mean, same thing as your normal deductible would be.
Yeah.
So, even if we did the $5 million deductible and it was two, $3 million occurrences, we'd, it'd be the same.
And then, the first loss is capped at $10 million?
No. What, that's the first layer. It's kind of like the 25-25 that we had in 2020. So, it's $10 million, $10 million is our base layer, and then $30 million is our excess. But there was, some of the structures that they presented, there was no dropdown, which means if we exceed, say, in the first occurrence, we exhausted that $10 million, then we had another hurricane, well, not only would we have to pay the $5 million, we'd have to pay the base layer $10 million before the $30 million kicked in. We chose to go with the dropdown, which means we pay the $5 million. If the $10 million's exhausted, that $30 million drops down and covers the $10 million through.
And that costs us $4 million?
Yes, sir.
The total premium is $4 million?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Essentially, so we're gonna be out $9 million, and still the $5 million is not a, not a cap if you have multiple events separated apart, kind of like what happened in 2020.
Well, I'll say, you know, prior to Hurricane Laura, in my 20 years here at the port, 19 years here at the port, Hurricane Rita, we had a $1 million insurance claim. So...
Wait, I'm sorry. Can you say that?
We had a $1 million insurance claim with Hurricane Rita. Hurricane Laura was, you know, just a catastrophic storm, one that we've never seen before. Obviously, in the history, I think Louisiana since the 1800s. So, I, I don't, I don't think we had an issue from an insurance perspective. It was just a storm that was just catastrophic. And if we continued paying, if we, if we tried, we, you couldn't get $500 million worth of insurance if you tried, if you could afford it.
And I guess, you know, and I'd like to hear from some, some of the other board members, but I brought it up because my concern is, as, as you pointed out, we did not budget for this, because when we did the budget, it hadn't been you, but it's high...
We did budget.
What's that?
We did budget for it.
Not the $5 million deductible?
No, not the deductible, but you don't, the deductible only comes into play if you have the loss. We, we budgeted for the premium.
But it's highly likely that we're gonna have some kind of a loss somewhere in the port over the 2021 period from fire, windstorm, or some sort, some sort of property loss that we have a fairly high, very high deductible, and we have not put any money in reserve or accounted. So, my question, and that's why I wanted to bring it to the full board, is get input to see if possibly we should reserve some funds to cover any incidental claims that we have leading up to that $5 million deductible.
Sure. And I'm totally fine with that. I can just say that over the last 15 years, you know, and dating even further back than that, again, Hurricane Rita's insurance claim was $1 million. So, you know, I guess potentially, we would have a claim this year, but dating back to 2005, when Heat Rita hit, it was $1 million. And then, we had essentially no claims from a hurricane or catastrophic loss until 2020?
No other property type losses?
Not that I recall.
There's historical information available, though, correct?
Yeah.
Showing what...
What's the average over the last 10 years per year?
It's been zero over the last 10 years prior to Laura, from a property perspective? I mean, Rita was a $1 million insurance claim, and that was in 2005. That's 15 years ago.
So, it's been nominal?
It's been zero.
Up until 2001.
From a property standpoint, we have not had any catastrophic hurricanes and claims. We haven't had any insurance claims from a property insurance perspective since Hurricane Rita. I mean, directors, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't recall any. But if the board chooses to reserve $5 million, that sounds fine to me. I mean, I'm, I'm not arguing with you. I just want you to understand that from a claim perspective, we go from 2005 and $1 million, and then we go 15 years, zero, and then we have Hurricane Laura and Hurricane Delta.
Could I ask a question? Have, have you identified where that $5 million would come from in the budget?
No, we, the $5 million is not, the $5 million is, would just come out of our operating account from a cash perspective, and we have the funds in that account to cover it. Carl's question is, do you want to reserve $5 million in the event that there is a $5 million claim? We don't typically budget for claims that are potential, you know, we, we just have not done that. We just don't budget for potential claims or even our deductible. We didn't reserve over the past 15 years or 10 years when our deductible was capped at $500,000. We never budgeted $500,000 deductible.
There's a big difference in $500,000 and $5 million.
I know. We can certainly budget for it. It's just, it's just, you can't really, from an insurance, from a financial statement perspective, you can't book that $5 million until there's actually a claim. You can budget for it, but I can tell you, over the last 15 years, if we budgeted $5 million, we'd have been $5 million favorable to budget every year.
$5 million poke, poke a big hole in a bucket, especially if you're exposed to more than one deductible within a budget year. So, I mean, I do think the prudent thing for the board to do is to consider at least establishing some amount that it hopes to be able to set aside each budget year with the expectation that it will not be called upon to have to pay that deductible so that it can accumulate money, whether it's over a two-year, a three-year, a five-year, or if you're fortunate, a 10-year period before it's going to be called upon. Because unfortunately, we are in a geographical area where we know that we're not paying these premiums with the expectation that we're never gonna be called upon to file a claim. We know it's gonna happen.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that I would hope that at some point, if there is a reduction in hurricane activity... in hurricane activity as there was subsequent to Hurricane Rita, the premiums-
I just don't want to say that we're going to have an unfunded liability that's that substantial.
It's not, I would not say, well, let me go back to my original point. I guess it's not going to be an unfunded liability until the event occurs. And so if the port, if the board would like to reserve $5 million in a special balance sheet account to cover a deductible, that's, there's, that is, I have no argument.
What kind of account?
It's, it's essentially a reserve fund, and it's essentially just a balance-
A money-bearing, a money-bearing account?
Yeah, we earn a very small, low interest rate on those funds. We would just, we would just move $5 million to that account and hold on to it. It's, it does not affect the income statement. It's simply a balance sheet reclass entry.
Can I make a comment here? Our, our health insurance, it's self-insured?
Oh, yes.
And your retirement benefits, you really don't know what we owe in retirement until you get that assessment from the state. Is that correct?
There's an actuarial calculation for the retirement.
Oh, yeah, exactly. So just as a ballpark estimate, what are those two totaling to on an annual basis? Just a ballpark?
Our, our insurance, self-insured fund sits at about $2 million. We, and we have that fund set aside for that to cover claims. And those claims run, they vary from year to year. And I, I just don't know that answer off the top of my head.
And the retirement, is ballpark, how much is your actuarial calculation? How much is that running here?
Yeah, I don't know the answer. My-
Sure. But it's, it's a similar situation, right?
Well, on the actuarial, on the state side, the state has an actuary that does the calculation, and they just send you the amount that you need to pay. Yeah. But I, if the board wants to allocate $5 million for it, it's, there's, it's very easy to accomplish. It won't affect the income statement. It won't affect the operating or capital budget.
It's not a good idea, I mean.
And maybe we could look in in future budgets, as Tom pointed out, coming up with some budget number that we can start accumulating the money, even though it's in a restricted account. At that point, it's actually coming out of the budget over a period of time. So you go five years with no claims, and all of a sudden get one, you've got the money reserved, which was actually taken out of the budget.
I think that's a prudent measure. I, I'll just point out one thing, though. I do, you know, after Hurricane Rita, hurricane premiums went up. After Hurricane Laura and Hurricane Delta, they obviously spiked. I would hope that in the next few years, the premiums are going to normalize if there's not an uptick in hurricane activity. And we may not, we, we may get to the point where we don't even need the $5 million fund set aside. But if the board chooses to do it, feel free. We'll, we'll certainly-
I'd be glad to. I'd like to take and make a motion that we put away reserve funds for that particular reason. I think $5 million is probably a good figure to start, and we could see about it every budget year if we so desire.
I second. Second by Mr. Darbone. Any further discussion?
I would just like to say, if I may, that because this was not part of a submission and draft resolution by the staff, Michelle and I will work to take the information here and draft a resolution and have you guys review it and sign it. But it'll be exactly what was stated here. We just don't have a draft for you.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Ayes have it. Motion carried. January 2021 financial briefing note, Cameron?
Yes, sir. For the month ended January 31st, 2020, the port generated revenues of 3.3 million, resulting in a $100,000 unfavorable variance. That variance is primarily due to lower-than-expected petroleum coke and baywright. It was mostly offset by some damage repair reimbursements for berth six repairs and some dredge area capacity granted to one of our customers. Expenses were 3.8 million, resulting in a $900,000 favorable variance, and that was primarily due to the operating expenses being lower due to the lower tonages. Non-operating revenues and expenses were around $300,000. That's a $21.9 million unfavorable variance due to the receipt of the insurance payment being pushed to February rather than January. Where we expect. EBITDA was $800,000, and we generated cash flows of 1.1 million. On the balance sheet, unrestricted cash decreased 8.6 million due to the payment of the property insurance premium and some hurricane-related expenses. Trade accounts receivables increased 1.3 million due to the 75-25 FEMA split. Fixed assets increased 5.2 million due to the completion of the setup of the Mobile Harbor crane. On the flip side of that, construction in progress decreased 4.6 million because that project was completed and capitalized. Current liabilities increased 3.7 million due to some hurricane-related payables that we're working on paying. And long-term debt decreased 1.2 million due to the payment on the outstanding bonds. The remaining balance sheet accounts, as of January 31st, did not change significantly. Any questions?
No questions. Next report, administration, finance, security. Cameron, again?
Yes, sir. Actually, not long before this meeting, we received word, as mentioned, there was a 75-25 FEMA split, that they are most likely going to 90-10. That should be confirmed in the next couple of days. So it's good news.
That's a good report.
Good, sir.
Good report.
Yeah.
Should have got that one first.
At least we're standing on a pause.
Thank you.
Questions?
Sorry.
Well, and I would just like to recognize staff, and, and some members are of our congressional delegation, and others who have worked very diligently in getting us to that point. So thankful, thanks to everyone who, who did so. Good job. Big deal.
Okay, navigation, Channing?
Yes, Mr. President, Commissioner's final report refers to the never-ending story on that project partnership agreement that we have been trying to negotiate with the Corps of Engineers. It's been before the board twice. We just got word today that it has been finally approved by the division in Vicksburg and is going to be sent to headquarters for headquarters review. It may come back to you with some more changes. I can't make any guarantees on that. But at least we've made another step forward. Thank you. That's all I have except to answer questions.
No questions. Operations, Todd?
So the PT-1, this month, we finished a baywright ship. We did it in about three and a half days. It was only about 29,000 tons. So we used the material handler, I'm sorry, the Mobile Harbor crane and, for half the ship, and then we used ship's gear at the same time. So that operation went pretty well as far as time and speed. We also worked a rootile ship, which we're only allowed, only able to work just the Mobile Harbor crane. It was about four days, but that was during the storm of the ice and snow. We can't work in the water and the, you know, in the rain and the snow. And so it's not a really good indication. But I think the guys are getting better for the machines, so hopefully, production will continue. We've got another rootile ship that will be loading, or I'm sorry, discharging this month, as well as loading a Calsin ship. At City Docs, we're, tomorrow, we should start receiving commercial milled rice for a, another Dominican Republic ship. It's one of the sideload ships that we load. So we should start receiving that rice tomorrow. And Southern Ionics is still working hydro barges. Gulfstream Marine finished a project cargo ship this month, and they're expecting another blade ship around week 10. And it'll actually be 62-meter blades, which is a big jump up from the 42-meter blades we've been having. Do you have any questions?
Okay, no questions. Cargo and trade development?
Thank you, Mr. President. The port recently was awarded about 20,000 tons of rice from USDA. The rice has been coming from two local rice mills here in Louisiana. It's going to split between two ships. We'll probably get the first ships in time late March, early April. This is the single largest one commodity purchase USDA ever had through Lake Charles that we have on record. Usually they buy multiple commodities. It's the first time they just bought a whole bunch of rice. And with that, we get an, have an article coming in the Thrive magazine related to these two shipments. The cargo is going to West Africa, the Sahel region. It's very congregating. You have about 500,000 people displaced and about 2.5 million people with, that need food assistance. And so if you want to have a story connecting the port globally while recovering locally, because some of us know how it feels to be displaced, because some, some of us were displaced last year because of hurricanes.
Questions? Engineering, Nick?
Nick went home sick this afternoon. He was here.
If the chair. Okay, lobbyist report, anything to add to Gingers? Federal lobbyist, Chuck, you have anything additional to add other than the written report?
No.
Thank you, Chuck, for being here. Any other matters that need to come before the board?
I just wanted to point out one thing real quick. We, we gave you all copies of an email that we received from Lake Charles methanol. They were really excited about the fact that Maersk has now decided that they're going to use low-carbon feedstock methanol for all their vessels. They felt as though that was a really, you know, good market for them to try to pursue. They said that just 12 of the very large Maersk vessels could use 100% of their feedstock, of their $4 million, $4 million metric tons in output. So they were really excited about that. And they said there's about 11,000 very large ocean-going vessels that would be a potential market for them. But I gave you, you have the copies of the press releases that they sent.
Okay. Next item, executive session, motion.
I move it going to executive session.
Mr. Lorenzi moves.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Dixon. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Ayes have it. We're going to go into executive session.